Hopefully Hayden shows up in a few minutes, but go ahead and open the town council meeting of June tenth, twenty nineteen. And the first order of business is the invocation and the pledge.
We meet to serve our community, to use our resources wisely and well, to represent all members of our community fairly, to make decisions that promote the common good. We recognize our responsibility to the past and the future, and the rights and needs of both individuals and community. As trusted servants, we see blessings on our deliberations and on our efforts here today. May we act wisely and well. Amen.
Amen. Terry?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. We've got a nice crowd today, like to see that. Welcome to the town council. And let's see, we do have a couple of additions to the agenda. We have a proclamation, of course, for Mr. Wharton, and then we have the introduction of ordinance number one ninety-two for the sale of surplus property at three oh one four one six six zero Courthouse Drive. So we'll go ahead and move on to the minutes. Everyone should have received a copy of last month's minutes. Any questions, comments?
I move to approve the May thirteenth, twenty nineteen minutes as presented.
I'll second.
Motion in the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Thank you very much. Okay, treasurers report. Rebecca.
You want to do the proclamation?
Oh, yeah, I want.
We don't want to see John sit through the whole meeting.
John, come on up, please.
Actually, I first met John probably nineteen eighty-six, eighty-five, when he first year, first time I ran for a town council. So John's been around town for quite a while, so we appreciate everything he's done for us. So this is a proclamation from the town of Leonardtown, recognizing his valuable contributions. John Wharton, whereas the Leonardtown community wishes to recognize John Wharton on his retirement, May thirty-first, twenty nineteen, as the news reported for the Enterprise newspaper, who covered many town council meetings, planning zoning meetings, along with quite a few special events over the span of thirty-four years. And now, whereas John Wharton strove to objectively report, write, and publish fair and accurate news to serve the community, for which we thank him for his representation. And whereas John took time to listen to people's concerns and was committed to upholding the responsibility for the forming our community, his specialty was engaging personally with the residents and business people to gain the true understanding of the subject for his articles. And whereas a special visit was fondly looked forward to by the town staff every Christmas holiday, when John would stop by to serenade us with his fiddle and have the staff join him in singing his special rendition of Blue Christmas. And now, therefore, we, the commissioners of Leonardtown, invite all citizens of town of Leonardtown to reflect upon and honor the positive impact John Wharton has for imparting his love of commentary and journalism, and wish him the very best decades of retirement enjoyment. Congratulations.
Got it?
Thank you. Appreciate everything.
Now, John, you don't have to sit here and listen to today's meeting like you did all the rest. Okay. Now we'll get to the rest of the meeting here. Treasurers report. Rebecca.
And we'll briefly review the May financial information that was distributed in the packet. During the month, I transferred five hundred thousand dollars to the local government investment pool, and we are ninety-two percent through the budget year. At the end of May, we did receive the third quarterly income tax receipt from the controller. It is the exact same as the previous two quarters. So until August, during the final distribution for FY nineteen, we won't quite know where we stand. And ultimately, it's not until November, when all the reconciling items are reported, that I'll know exactly what trend we are on for income tax. You will see that the water service charges will likely come in slightly under budget for FY nineteen, but there is also a corresponding surplus on the expense side. So the department as a whole should yield a positive result for the year. In the recommended budget that is on the table for public hearing tonight, those water service charge estimates have been dialed back for FY twenty as a result of the activity for FY nineteen. And we've talked several times about the in-house network and a major server upgrade that we have been rolling out in phases. The next phase is scheduled to be done at the end of this month. The utility billing web payment portal that customers see when they log on to make payments and see their account activity will also be upgraded at that time. So we'll do some type of social media push to let people know that it will look different, it will have enhanced capabilities. The biggest improvement is going to be, it is intended to work on all platforms, whereas right now, we do have some customers that struggle with using their phones to make these payments. So they have improved that, so it should work on all types of platforms. And have a better look to it and provide a little bit more information and a graphic display that a lot of people like to see.
Very good.
And then the last thing would be for the budget hearing.
I was gonna say, we do have a budget hearing at four fifteen, so any questions for Rebecca for the current budget? Or the reports?
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Well, why don't we jump to planning department while we've got a couple of minutes? Jada, oh, there she is.
I'm not here. So planning and zoning hasn't met since April. They do have a meeting scheduled for next week, Monday, the seventeenth. We have two cases on the agenda. We'll have the final site plan approval for the Smecko building. And then we will also have the architectural plan review and approval for Seymour Town Building right here on Washington Street. Unless you have any questions about the belief met list, that's all I have.
Quite a few, as usual.
It was a busy month.
Yeah. Any questions for Jada? Thank you very much. And let's see. Everyone should have received Corporal Nelson's police report. Any questions on that? Quite a few things going on. Of course, with all the events that we've got going on, she's busy. All the graduations, she was part of that also. See, there were forty-one traffic stops and seventeen motor vehicle accidents last month.
Leonardtown's keeping her busy.
Mm-hmm.
That's good.
Yep.
But not too busy.
Okay, well, it's four fifteen, so we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. We're gonna entertain a motion to close the regular meeting and open a public hearing for ordinance one ninety-one, FY twenty budget.
So move.
Second.
Okay, and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so wanna go ahead and do a presentation on the budget, please?
So a brief summary. The recommended budget, a very detailed budget message, and the proposed utility service charges have been posted on the town website. This public hearing was advertised in the County Times, the Enterprise, on our website and on Facebook. So the council took the draft budget, held a budget workshop on May the twenty-eighth. Some minor changes have been included for this recommended budget. The tax rate is proposed to stay the same at point one-two-six-six per one hundred dollars of assessment. The State Department of Assessments and Dexation has calculated the constant yield tax rate to be point one-two-seven-seven, which is higher than what you're proposing to adopt. The utility service charges are proposed to change as follows. The water rates will change by zero percent. The sewer rates will change by zero percent. The trash charges for residential and commercial will increase between seventeen and thirty-five percent. Recycling rates for commercial accounts will change between twenty-three and forty-three percent. And the bay fee remains at fifteen dollars per quarter. And as a reminder, at a previous council meeting, the water impact fee was already increased to three thousand dollars for permits that were not grandfathered because of April first, twenty nineteen. And we have not received any comments.
No comments, okay. Any questions for Rebecca?
I was gonna say, Rebecca, first of all, thank you, but also, when we came to the trash, I know we decided twice a week on the trash.
Yes.
And really, that was the better deal, right? So then we talked about once, and it wasn't, was it like eight dollars more just to do the twice a week? Was that right?
There wasn't, because the trash you're disposing of stays the same.
Mm-hmm.
You don't cut the service charge in half, so there wasn't as big of a decrease. I don't remember exactly how much, but it was less than ten dollars.
Okay.
And that's per quarter?
Per quarter.
Per quarter, right, okay.
Yes.
Any other questions from the council?
Nope.
Okay, I'd go ahead and open it up to the public, see if they have any comment or questions regarding the budget. Okay, hearing none. I would go ahead and entertain a motion to close the public hearing and open up the regular meeting.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. So take, entertain any motions on the budget.
Okay, I move to approve ordinance number one ninety-one, adopting the FY twenty budget and setting the tax rate.
I second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. Michelle, we're gonna go into your report, please.
First item on the agenda is to go back to the final site plan request for Clark's Rest self-storage facility, which you heard last month and had tabled. We held the public hearing last month. We have received a couple of letters today, which I gave you copies of prior to the meeting. The public hearing is closed, but I did pass on those. We do have Rick Bailey here to address some of the changes per your request last month. You had wanted to bring the case back after your concerns and see how they were addressed, so turn it over here.
Thank you very much. Mr. Mayor and members of the council, I appreciate the opportunity to come back again today. I'm hoping that we try to hear the comments that you offered last month when we were here, take that into consideration and make some revisions and so forth. What I'd like to do, I've got a number of renderings, and I'd like to walk through, show you what we've revised, so you see the current ideas and thoughts for the design. And I've got, as I flip through, I'll also show you what we had started with, so you can see the revisions and how we've progressed at the same time, too. So this is what you see to start with. This is a view of the facility as you approach into Leonardtown on Route Five. I'll share you here, this is a single-story building, fencing and so forth at this location. This is the revisions that have been included, including the windows have now, they're darkened, they're black, so they're opaque. You will not be able to see any doors or anything else behind it, but it does give more of an office-type appearance or whatever else, so it's not just a blank wall at the same time, too. So that has been incorporated, number one. Some of the other things that we have done is at the back of the building, we have created what we would call an architectural embellishment. There's an exit that comes out here that creates some vertical definition and so forth. And then along this side of the building, we've had broken, it's broken it up with some architectural features at the top portion and so forth, with a variety of materials and so forth. This is what we started with when we were originally at the planning commission. This is the front of the building, does not show the darkened windows, but they are darkened at this point in time. But this shows you the difference in height. Originally, we were a little less than forty-five feet, and it's my understanding the ordinance for the town of Leonardtown allows you to go to forty-five foot. We were underneath of that to start with, but we heard the comment and have gone back and looked to see what we could do to reduce that. The signage, we've taken off of this at the same time. It probably exceeded the square footage that we were allowed. We did not look at it. Any signage we do will have to comply with the sign ordinance at the same time. So we've reduced it from a little less than forty-five feet. Now we're down, this is the front portion of the building, down to forty-one feet. So that's a reduction of about four, over three feet to four foot at that point. And I will offer this comment, too. We're not looking for any variances. Everything we have done, I think, is in accordance with what your ordinance requires or allows for a P U D. I bring that up because we were not in excess of the height ordinance to begin with. Setbacks and so forth in the law, we're all complying with them, so there's no ordinance revisions or exceptions that we're looking for at the same time. Going to the side of the building, the opposite side, this would be the side of, thank you, Martin, towards the Clark's Rest. What we have done, this is the front portion that we showed you that we have reduced the elevation on. This elevation here for the balance of the building's about thirty-five feet approximately. We've also have broken it up architecturally and provided some additional detail for that, which matches on the other side of the building, too. The other thing we've done, if you go back and look at this as a comparison, we have, this is the original that you can see. This was straight across, it did differentiate the materials, but as you all pointed out, it did not provide any vertical separation, so that it broke it up when you looked at that side. You'll see there's no trees along this side here, too. The previous one, I, Martin, what you see with the architectural representation, we went back after the meeting last time, met with our landscape architect and landscaper, the both, asked them to give us some recommendations for types of trees, their direction to them. We're looking for something with some variety to it. We didn't want all evergreens, we didn't want all deciduous trees, we wanted a variety. And that'll provide some interest and so forth to it. These are accurate representation in terms of what these tree types would represent with about a ten-year growth to it. We try to find a happy medium. Actually, they'll reach a total height twenty-five, thirty years down the road, but, and you can't go and get instantaneous growth when we plant them at the same time. This is the architectural representation, again, looking at it from the side of the building as you approach into the town. This was an interim, an intermediate design. This is what you saw last time, not what you, but this is what we had actually showed the planning commission. They had some comments. We've gone on this side of the building and provided some architectural break and so forth that you can see. And we provided the actual tree representation for the trees here and along the side of the parking at the same time, too. This is the interim design, where you see the mansard did not have the breaks to it, it was continuous throughout. This is a previous representation, did not have that architectural embellishment at the far exit from the building. Other things I would point out specifically, this is the site plan with the accurate representation of the trees that you see on the elevations at the same time, too. We have gone back and, because there was a concern with the RV boat parking, how that would be screened. So we've looked at it from two perspectives. The RV boat parking is only fifteen, twenty spaces total. I think it's important for you to recognize it's not a huge number. They will be identified within a specific area. Reason it can't just be mass packed, so to speak, we need a circulation pattern around the buildings to be able to serve the customers for the self-storages themselves. They will be designated in specific areas at the same time. We'll have the additional landscaping here. We'll pick up, we'll have the gate entrance at this point. And what we are proposing to do originally, this drawing shows a six-foot fence with vinyl slaps and so forth that would present a visual barrier to it. And I think that was our original understanding. I think maybe there's a possibility that you can go to much eight-foot, and we certainly would consider doing that at the same time, too. The other point I'd make out, we spoke about the heights. I think comparison of the heights here for this portion of the building here is forty-one, the balance of it's thirty-five. This building here is only twelve foot. For comparison purposes, just looking within the town, I think the new building across the street is approximately twenty-three, twenty-five foot, just to give you a perspective. The guy distributing buildings is about thirty feet, plus or minus, somewhere's in that perspective. So we're not totally out of scale with what you have existing. The other thing, right over here, I passed the Harris Teeter a little bit, and we did a shopping center in Dunkirk last year with a Harris Teeter, and it all involved me. What was the height of the Harris Teeter building? The front of the building on the, with the different architectural features are probably thirty-five, forty feet, because it has some varied heights to it. If you look on Route Four, that's one solid wall, no architectural embellishments or anything to it, just measuring. And that's probably twenty-five, twenty-eight feet. So I think that's a good perspective to give you an idea of what that looks like in that wall versus this. In other words, the Harris Teeter parallels right along Route Four. These are at least are perpendicular to it at the same time. I think those are the things that we heard. Hopefully, we heard the right message, and we try to go back and take that into consideration. Hope you'll find them favorable at the same time.
Could you expand on the security of the system?
Certainly. There'll be limited hours here. First of all, it's gonna be operated by Cube Smart. Cube Smart is a national operator. We're gonna work with their standards. It's a secure site. It'll have a secure gate. You have to have a code access even to enter into the site. The only access you can have when you come off of Route Five prior to going into security would be the offices themselves, where you go in to be able to make arrangements or do and conduct any business for the self-storage you have. The buildings will be totally secured, so that not only do you have to enter your code specifically to get into the site, in order to get into the buildings themselves, you will need to also enter your code at the same time. They'd be monitored with cameras in terms of security at the same time, that monitor back to the offices. Again, the things I would emphasize, limited hours, dusted on, that type of thing typically, depends upon the time of year and so forth. It's not twenty-four seven. Now, if somebody has a specific problem they need to get in under emergency, there will be a provision to allow them to do that. That comes up from time to time. But it's a secure building, it's not open to the public. It's, the other thing that's important is that with Cube Smart, and this is reason we're looking for them, we do operate three other self-storage facilities currently ourself. They're not a hundred percent climate controlled, such as these, with all the controls. We want to go with them, with the systems that they have in place. They have the expertise. Gives us the added security in terms of the ownership of it, which we will maintain and continue with. But at the same time, it provides the proper security for the public. The public being those who are there to be able to take advantage of the units.
And this would have cameras and monitors?
Yes, the cameras all right.
Throughout.
Outside and interior both.
Right.
Is the way that they will work.
Okay.
Who's gonna be monitoring the cameras?
Cube Smart's representatives.
Up here locally, or will they be?
Here locally.
So there will be somebody in the office the entire time that the facility is open?
Yes, there will be, yes. That's the purpose and the function of it. And we had it on the other facilities, too. We have cameras, so that our site operators, for those, for instance, do have access anytime they're on site to be able to see them at the same time.
And when it comes to Mr. Bailey, too, the codes, is that an individual code or is it generic code that anyone can get? How does that work?
It'd be an individual code. Everybody who has contracts for a unit will be signed their individual code at the same time, too. Let me offer another point, too, fire safety. We will work with the local fire department. They have what's known as a Knox box, where we will put on outside of the building the box that the fire department will have access to, so that they will be able to have access to the building in the event of any type of emergency at the same time, too. It's important for them to be able to twenty percent of.
We've got Knox box here, so.
Exactly, but it's important. Some people aren't aware of the capabilities of that, but it's very important at the same time, too.
Why don't you talk about the lighting?
Okay. The Clark's Rest community is over here. I think it's an important consideration. There is no other community around here and so forth. The only light on this side of the building, there's an exit door at this point. So just like going out of your house, as a code requirement, you need a, what I call a porch light at each exit point. That will be the only light on this side of the building. The only lights on this side of the building will be controlled by a time clock with hours of operation. They will be, the light poles themselves and/or lights that are on the side of the building will all project in this area. Two things with them, they're night sky friendly, meaning they project down, they don't project out for light pollution. And there will be a complete photometric study completed by the light company, the electrical engineer, ensuring that the light is concentrated here at the same time, too. Those lights will be separate from here. Another point in respect to visibility, if you were to approach this coming into town, this area here, when you just get past the trees at the, where McIntosh Run is and so forth, first of all, the site is pretty well blocked until you get past those trees. Then when you get past it, it's still pretty well hidden from, meaning the parking and so forth, because when we had the store order management pond here designed, which is designed, constructed, completed to meet all the code requirements, we had to create berms around that, so it's built up. So if you come down Route Five coming into town, you'll notice that embankment and so forth. You get past it before you even see our site at the same time, too, which I think's an important consideration.
As far as traffic goes, you know, seeing Christie's report with forty-one accidents last month, how much, what are the projections for people going in and out of this facility?
Two points. One, that's one reason we chose this, that we felt was an appropriate use. It's a very low traffic generator. There's no signalization here that would allow us to get in and out if we had a high-traffic generator. And that's quite frankly, the reason we got turned down when we went to some other users, such as Starbucks or Dunkin' Donuts or even any fast foods or anything of that nature. There's not, with the given traffic you have, there's not enough of a brake on a constant basis to support or allow that type of traffic volume. For the standards for a self-storage facility of this size, it typically would be about seven trips per hour on your busiest day, maybe that's Saturday. So that means one every eight to ten minutes at the max, which we felt is an important consideration. That's what we see at our other facilities at the same time, too. So people have the tendency.
Compared to a retail shop like Shops of Breton Bay, you know, I mean, you're talking seven to eight vehicles a minute.
Yes, exactly, right, with the turning motions and everything.
Right.
That's the reason we felt this was an appropriate use of this site.
And just to give everybody a history here, the original concept called for there to be access to this commercial site from Clark's Rest Road, but when the state came in and increased the buffers on the streams, they increased it from twenty-five feet to a hundred feet. So that eliminated any connection to Clark's Rest Road.
What you're referring to, this is Clark's Rest Road coming into the subdivision here. Store order management pond, the large ponds in this area, this significant amount of wetlands and so forth here. This is the pump station for reference purposes. And then if you flip back around, this is the location of the pump station. So you can see the horizontal distance separation from Clark's Rest Run, excuse me, Clark's Rest Road and the houses themselves, together with the wooded buffer and so forth in between. We lost, we were hoping, we're down to just a couple waivers of commercial. We were hoping we were in the neighborhood of about ten, but that went by the wayside when we did the wetland delineation with buffers with.
Right. Any comments from council?
Another question that Mr. Bailey asked last time, what about like long-term maintenance? Because we see how some of these storage units around the county don't really maintain. Of course, this one is sitting in front of a beautiful community here in Leonardtown, so I mean, I would always wanna see it look outstanding.
I'd address it two ways. First of all, with the type of materials we're using, the mainstream. First of all, with the type of materials we're using, they're masonry products pretty much with the exception of some of the accents and so forth, which could be Ethis type of material which we use on a lot of our commercial retail projects, the Market Square Retail Center, a lot of the copings and so forth on the top of the office buildings there in Prince Frederick, and the retail both include that. Those buildings are approaching twelve, thirteen years old, similar type of construction literally as this. The key to it, we maintain them because we own them, we're long-term investors in that respect. I will also add an additional point, I think it came up previously about the landscaping. The question was raised, what if you put the landscaping in and it dies? I think there's a provision or, or within the town to enter into an agreement to make sure that that's maintained at the same time too.
We have a standards planting agreement that we can put in force.
And you mentioned that it's masonry, but it's, it's not cinder block, it's brick.
It's a, it's a brick product, that's right.
Rose colored brick?
It's got some accents to it and that type of thing at the same time. My point is, when you're using that type of construction that has longer term durability than if you're using something that is a hundred percent Ethis or metal panels or things that you can typically see for a lot of cell storage projects, it's a different level of quality at the same time.
All right, and the boat RV parking, any touch base on it, but that, we will not be able to see that, right? That will be behind the facility like the residents of Clark's Rest can't see it, I mean.
Yes, let me, I'll address it in two respects. One, residents of Clark's Rest, all those are over here, so you have, RV parking is here. This building, as I said, thirty-five feet tall and so forth, so it's on the other side of it, so that blocks the view at the same time. Here's some photos that I had taken from the site which would help give a perspective. This photo is taken from this corner up here, looking straight back up to the houses, you can barely see the top of the homes at that point. You can see, you can see more homes here, that photo is taken from this point, I tried to find the point in between the trees that showed the most of the homes, even that, there's only one or two homes that you can, maybe three, that you can, that are above the trees and so forth. So, the RV parking again is on the other side of it. And keep in mind, all the, these trees will stay, I mean, they're in the wetlands, buffer and so forth, so in addition to the landscaping that we will provide, you have the natural vegetation, these are all in this area, this side of the Stormwater Management Pond, so they'll continue to grow at the same time. There's a photo, this is looking straight out the back, and you can see all the vegetation and so forth there.
And all that will stay there then?
Yeah, absolutely, yes.
But of course, those pictures are taken when the vegetation is in season, what's going to happen in the winter when all the leaves fall off the trees?
Well, I think, looking at it, I think it's a mixture of evergreens within it, so, so deciduous trees will lose leaves, I agree, but the others will not, in terms of some of the pines and so forth, that's what we're adding here, some additional pines together with the deciduous trees at the same time. They were taking this last week, so I agree with that.
And we asked, I believe at the last council meeting, we had talked about maybe turning that side building, so it was parallel to Route Five, and it would hide all the RV parking?
And we, and we looked at that. The primary reason, I did not take that, or did not realize it when we had discussed it, these buildings have already been laid out for their internal configuration, ingress, egress, they're individual storage units, the size of them and everything, including this building here. To go back and, and now, and the reason that was done at that stage, we had to submit before we even went to planning commission to the fire marshal for their review for life safety purposes and so forth. To do that would require redoing it altogether, and that building would not, you would have one wall here, it would totally change it, it became impractical to try and consider to do that at the same time.
And remember, that RV park is on the other side.
Well, it's, right, but it's still along Route Five.
Along Route Five, but they're adding a eight-foot fence, and again, it's an angle up, so even though the vehicle might be ten feet, you're angling up so you wouldn't be able to see that behind them.
Maybe not see it.
Yeah.
I, I mean, I have concerns, I was thinking of National Lampoon's Christmas Vacation where the, you know, uncle comes and parks his RV there in front of the, in front of the house. And I did go ahead and pull the Cube Smart contract and take a look at it, and it does, all it says is that the vehicles have to be in working order, it doesn't say that they have to be in maintained in any condition, so.
That's not the contract we signed with Cube Smart.
That's, that's.
Our contract is specifically designed for this project.
But that's not, that was for the residents, or for the people that rent space from Cube Smart.
That doesn't mean that that is the contract we're using on this site, because that can be modified to address the individual sites, we've addressed that with Cube Smart.
Okay, I'd be curious to see that contract.
We can provide it at the appropriate time. This is what I was speaking of here, this is the pond, this is looking in this direction, you can barely see the top of the vehicle when you stand at the site here in the middle of it at the same, that's where I wanted you to realize the great differential at the same time. In, in terms of the contract, we'll let, the final version of that when it's executed, what we'll do, we'll sign the management contract with Cube Smart, and that will include an exhibit of what will be utilized for them at the same time. Go ahead and do that.
And I think the, the mayor inquired about the lighting, said the lighting that's going on here will not interfere with any of the residents of Clark's Rest, right? It's, okay.
No, the building itself's thirty-five foot, the highest light pole will be twenty-two, twenty-three foot, something of that nature, and it'll all be concentrated over here if the Clark's Rest homes are in that direction.
And they point down, not?
It's going down, that's the purpose of the photometric study where it concentrates the, where it shines. It's, it's not a car parking lot where you want to illuminate everything, it's for security purposes only for the people that are there for that time of the year, not necessarily this time of the year, but the winter, that type of thing when they're there, when it's dark at four-thirty, quarter of five.
I think I have one more, okay, so the Knox box that's on the building for fire and EMS, how will that work for the gate? How will they get past the gate? Is there another one that will allow?
We will specifically meet with the fire department locally, that's what we've done on our other locations, giving them directions, how they want to do it, they would lead directions in the Knox box, they want, it varies from department to department is what we've experienced in the past, but whatever it is, their wish is what we will, it, it'll be accommodated so that they will have access onto the site.
I, I did have another question. When you guys were here last week, the associate that you had with, with you, he mentioned that women are often afraid to be alone in the storage unit, and so you've made extra, put in extra security measures. Why was that comment brought up? I thought that was a very interesting comment to bring up, is it something that there's a concern?
No, I think it's a sensitivity that we have as an owner, not just for this, for sales models, for instance, that type of thing, when you have sales representatives there, you need to provide what you feel is a safe working environment and a safe environment for your customers at the same time too. I think people who realize a site is monitored with cameras and so forth, that provides an extra degree of security. I think it wasn't offered in terms of a concern that, that specific to this is a problem in any respect, it's to be proactive to ensure that it's not a problem.
Okay, I just, I just found it interesting, you know, as a woman, usually I'm not nervous, you know, if I'm somewhere, so now if you tell me that I'm going to be nervous, now I'm starting to wonder, why am I nervous as opposed to, I wouldn't, you know, I go to Target by myself all the time, I don't have any issues, so.
It's the same type of questions when my daughters went to college and they had a storage unit, like where is it, which are you accessed, where are you going? It's, it's, in my mind, it's something to be concerned about and have that awareness of, awareness I think is the important thing. I just think it's important. It's nothing specific to the specific facility itself, but it's, I think, just general awareness in your public, I think it's important.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I mean, I'll just say, Mr. Bailey, please don't take this wrong, am I sold on this idea? I'm really not, it's not what I had planned or thought that would go in that location, but you are meeting our zoning, and I do appreciate the fact that you have worked with us and made some changes so we can make this work the best we can, so I do appreciate that.
It's not, it wouldn't our number one choice either, otherwise we probably would have been before you years ago with some other alternatives.
Yeah, I mean, I have a storage unit kind of pictured off the road somewhere else, not, not on the main drag and not in front of the Clark's Rest community, so.
And the storage business has evolved at the same time, it's not just warehouses and that type of thing, it's evolved to more of a state-of-the-art with climate control, the security that we spoke of and so forth, but it's becoming more of a retail type of business and it's compatible with retail at the same time. So, I can appreciate your comments.
And I will say about the, the vehicle storage and boat storage, you know, with the, the residents that we do have now, the new subdivisions, they don't have the areas there to, to allow them to store a boat or a RV, so I, I asked you to actually leave this on, you, you talked about taking that off, but I think it's really needed by the residents now of Leonardtown, so that's kind of more background there also.
That was part of our, thank you.
Right, right. You know, I will say, you know, I, I know there's a number of people, residents and non-residents that would like to see something else there, but my, you know, our daughter and son-in-law and kids, grandkids live in Clark's Rest, so, I mean, I've certainly heard of all the complaints up there, you know, that are concerns, but again, it does meet the regulations of our zoning ordinance, and, you know, the council received a copy of the memo from our attorney, we just have to be very careful that if we turn something down and not have a good excuse for it or a good reason for it, it's going to be overturned. So, I think we, they, Merrick has done a great job to come in and make sure it's a nice clean environment, nice facility. Again, it's only compared to George Guy's building across the street, it's only, you know, like five feet, five feet or four feet higher, so it's, the perception that it's a huge monstrosity I think is a little over concerned, or, you know, I think once people can actually see this, it's not quite as bad as you, you, once, when you first hear of it. But as, you know, as far as the, the meeting, our guidelines, our zoning, it's, it's another example that we, we have got a copy of a bill from, or a letter from the Attorney General regarding CBD oils from cannabis. We've got someone that's applied for retail space there, that's not the kind of thing we'd really like to see, but, you know, it says, because state law expressly prohibits these activities, a local jurisdiction may not prohibit them. So, it's kind of goes in line with our, our guidelines for planning zoning, so.
Well, I have, I have some concerns about public safety, and I think that's something that we've addressed but probably not come to a resolution on, and that would include, you know, the homeless people that could be living there, you know, I, I got a letter talking about, you know, mice and, and things that could come in, and I had a unit at Cube Smart and everything was destroyed by, by rodents, and it was not, there, there was nothing for Cube Smart to do, they said it was not their problem. And so, I, I mean, I do definitely have some concerns, especially with there being residential units behind it and houses and people with children, you know, I definitely don't want people, you know, walking through there and going over to the library. You know, we have a program here in St. Mary's County, Warm, where we bring the homeless people in in the winter in different churches, put them up in a place, a nice warm place to stay overnight, and it runs from October until March, and that's how large the homeless population is. And I think that if they had the idea or thought to stay in a, a climate-controlled storage unit, that they may do that.
But that's the reason they've got so many controls in place to keep them, you know.
Yeah, but you can't control, you know, you can watch when somebody comes in and out, but you don't know when they leave, I've been through storage units before, so, you know, where people could come in.
Yeah, but this one's climate controlled, you have to get in the, in the building also, not just in the outside area.
Sure, but, but if they're renting a unit, then they have every right to do that. If they're renting a unit for a hundred and fifty dollars, it's a whole lot cheaper than, you know, staying in a hotel or something like that. It's just, like I said, it's a type of thing.
Rick, did you want to?
If I could address that somewhat, two things. One, it's controlled so that electricity's cut off, so you do not, meaning the lights do, their time clock also in the interior.
Sure.
That, that's not conducive to somebody who wants to be there at the temperatures dialled back to fifty-five degrees automatically, particularly in the winter and so forth. I don't, I don't want to give the impression that this is a, the same thing as a motel opportunity to somebody.
No, I, I don't think so either, but I think when you're talking about somebody living in the woods, in the woods, where they don't have electricity, they don't have any warmth, that they had the option, I mean, that's everything that I've researched and said, that's why people do live in storage units, it's not that they want to live there for sure, it's certainly not luxurious, but, you know, if you're sleeping on a mat in the woods or you're sleeping on a mat in a storage unit that's at least fifty-five degrees and you're not going to freeze to death, I think.
But with a monitoring monitor, if someone's moving around at midnight or ten o'clock, they're going, they're going to know something's going on there.
And their coming and going is monitored, I think is what you had said.
Exactly, yes.
Right. Any further?
Are you willing to hear your comments from the peanut gallery?
Certainly, but I will say that, you know, the public hearing has been closed, but no, I'm certainly will take.
Okay, thanks.
Comments?
I'm Doug Yslav, I'm a resident and, and I'm very much an advocate of the strategic plan that y'all have put in place. It just seems to me that this, this isn't really in consonance with the vision, I think this absolutely is part of downtown Leonardtown as, as we grow, and, and the, you know, the vision that, that y'all have in that plan, it was kind of an unfortunate comparison to Harris Teeter, but this is kind of, looks like, like, you know, a big old building and not in consonance with, with what we're trying to do with Leonardtown. I know that, that I'm new to the game and I'm sorry that I am, I guess I'd be interested to talk more with y'all about planning and zoning and how that works and how we, how we grow Leonardtown in the direction that, you know, that will be a, a beautiful destination kind of town and not, and not a Route Two Thirty-five and, and Harris Teeter kind of place.
Sure, and as, as we go earlier today, I'd be glad to meet with you and show you, show you everything that we've got going on in town.
That'd be great.
Sure? Yes, ma'am?
Hi, I'm Mary Ludwig and I'm a resident of Clark's Rest. I was very involved with the initial effort to put an animal shelter in our area, we did a neighborhood petition, and fortunately, we were able to be heard. And in this incident, I think I saw one memo that said there was discussion about a possible storage unit coming in the area. I was unable to attend the public meeting, but I had no idea that it had progressed to this point, that the selection had already been made, and I would say the majority of the Clark's Rest residents were not aware of this either. I have compiled and I'll be happy to leave it with anybody who wants to see it, messages that have been going back and forth on our Clark's Rest resident Facebook, what the general population feels about it, the concern that our trail that is part of Clark's Rest is going to run right beside this property, the concern that people that live on Clark's Rest Road, I believe, paid a more premium for a property that will be adjoining a huge storage unit, the concern that this is going to change the flavor of Leonardtown, as you're going down Route Five, we see the derelict buildings that are appalling, Pennies has been there forever, but yet there's new construction, there's a beautiful little small three-unit area, I think it's three, building, one story, that is very appealing. This is huge, this is not a shopping center, this is our neighborhood. And I did a little research, Merrick does have two storage units in Prince Frederick, and they're not in a neighborhood unless Google Earth is wrong. One is in a commercial center and the other looks like it's on a road that just has spasmodic buildings back and forth, but certainly no large residential area. This is right in our front yard, and one of the appeals for us by, Larry and I happen to live in the back, we're in a townhouse, so we're not on the main road, but still, it's our community. And the appeal for us were the, the signs that said surrounding greens, large pool, retail areas, beautiful surroundings, and I love that, that's one reason we moved there. But to me, this is introducing something to that part of Leonardtown which is going to foster something else. So, that's why we have another building with a big fence to hide it, and it'll just meet the, the criteria. Is it a zoning law, zoning group problem? I don't know. But I feel like once again, the residents of Clark's Rest have not had a chance to speak up. I even had someone ask, can we do another petition? And it was, at that point, it was too late, we had no idea that all of this work had gone forward, absolutely none, other than one memo, and I've got that, I can show it to you that's simply talking about. And then someone on the side, it wasn't directly given to us, got a picture of this and posted it, and that was where the word entered. I'm very disappointed.
I will offer this, we sent a personal letter, which I provided y'all a copy of at the last meeting, sent it out on two different dates because it was a hundred, at that point in time, a hundred and twenty-some residents in excess, specifically addressed not to homeowner or. whatever, individually addressed to every single homeowner in Clark's Rest. It was a page and a half letter, dealt with everything we had looked at in terms of possibilities for the site, uh, what we felt was the best solution to use this. And not only that, we included architectural renderings, not the same as these. They were modifications because we have changed since then. And we've heard comments from the Planning Commission and from y'all at the same time.
Sure.
But that went to every single resident in October of last year. And we got three responses, one of which was favorable. So I'm, I'm not sure what else we could have done. Uh, we, we tried to be proactive. We did not try to keep anything from anybody. And if we had heard an influx of, uh, comments at that time, we wouldn't certainly take that into consideration.
And I would just touch on the, the process. Because this is a PUD, it actually goes through an extra process than our regular, um, commercial zoning. So, um, it went through public hearings for concept plan and final site plan, which in 2012 is when it received final site plan. And that was commercial portion of the, of the project. Then for this time, it was before the Planning Commission and then they, and that was in April, I believe, and they sent a favorable recommendation to the council. So our, our minute, I mean, our meetings are all advertised. And then for it, it has the extra step, which comes back to the council because it's a planned unit development. And we advertise the public hearing in the newspaper, on the website, on our Facebook. Um, and then held the public hearing last month. And then, um, it was tabled, so it came back today. But it's been multiple meetings, it has been advertised, the court. And I would also add that the, the height regulations have been in place for probably twenty-five years, the, the forty-five feet. And we do review, um, every, every ten, uh, five years, excuse me, we do our comprehensive plan. And that's when we really look at the zoning categories and if changes need to be made. And we are coming up for our next comprehensive plan review. And each time we go through every page of the, of the zoning ordinance and look and see what's working, what's not working. And that's what the comprehensive plan is meant to do.
I understand. Um, a lot of people that live in Clark's Rest now were not there in 2012, obviously. You know, it's, it's a new community every day almost. So it's hard for everyone to stay current with what is, is going on. And perhaps that fault is more on the HOA side than, I don't know. But I, I guess what disappointed me the most was my excitement about having a real community in Leonardtown. We moved back to Leonardtown purposely. Larry only left not too many years after he was born here. He's never lived anywhere else. And to see this commercial, I, all I can see is Two Thirty-five and what might be coming down the pipe on Route Five, and I find it very disappointing.
Uh, Larry, um, I know you came and looked at our files and everything. Did you find anything?
Yeah, well, I'm going to address that.
Okay.
Now, I'm Larry Ludwig and, uh, I am a full-time, long-time resident of Leonardtown. I've been here all of about eight years of my life, uh, including, if you want to include the, uh, Brenton Bay area. Uh, well, and I'm, I'm an engineer, so things get a little dry with me sometimes. That's the way I think, going to be dry and straightforward. Here's, here's some of the facts. Uh, facts are that the developer has fulfilled the design requirements of the zoning ordinance. Uh, they have fulfilled the requirements for advertising the site as stated in the zoning ordinance. They fulfill all the requirements of the town to step forth, uh, as far as architectural landscaping design. Uh, they've, they've designed and satisfied the requirements for stormwater management and sediment control of the state of Maryland. And they've also satisfied, which is most difficult to do sometimes, the state highway administration's requirements for entrance, uh, development. Uh, I want to point out that the storage facility is not something that I want to see here. Uh, I want to see uses that my wife and I can enjoy. Uh, I would look for restaurants, coffee bars, sports bars, any other uses that I can use to entertain the family and friends. Uh, sites online show a, I see online a plethora of small business franchises that could fill retail space. I do not know to any extent who the developer, uh, has looked into other uses, but I'm not going to second guess those. So, um, also I, I do believe that the small business like, like a developer deserves to make a profit and have a good business and, and, and make money. And, uh, and, and that's actually the kind of free enterprise that builds our country and makes it as great as it is. Uh, this project, although, this project also represents a chee-chee moment for all of us. Uh, the zoning ordinance is written to re, to represent what the town wants to see in the future. What do we want this town to look like? That's what the zoning ordinance is built for. The fact that the zoning ordinance allows this kind of use should give us pause to think about the content of the zoning ordinance and whether revisions may be necessary. And I understand your, that's coming up here really soon. Uh, I want Leonardtown to be a great place to live. I love this town. Uh, the town understands the importance of finding ways to grow people. Uh, the town loves and follows for the past twenty-five years that I've worked in this town, uh, have been working with this end for many years. Uh, in closing, I do not believe uses, such uses as a storage facility serve to make Leonardtown a great place to live. And I'll leave it at that.
I will just also want to add that, uh, the property across the street, the Tudor Hall Farm, which the Clark's Rest, um, road will connect to, um, they are looking to start that process.
Mary Ozzos is VR.
They, uh, they are looking to have that, the Tudor Hall plan move forward. They want to have it ready to go when Clark's Rest and Meadows at Town Run are about done. So my point is, there's a commercial site across the street from there that they'll have the connection that the retail side is looking for. Unfortunately, in this particular site, when the, the state took away the, increased the buffers, they don't have that access. And, but the site across the street will, will have that access and will attract other retail. Same with, um, Wayne Davis's, um, you know, he's got the one building there, but we're hoping that he'll be able to connect to, uh, in the back to, um, to the Tudor Hall Road also. So that would create more of a retail atmosphere. Unfortunately, with this site, the way, uh, the buffers went, it, it just doesn't attract the, uh, the retail because the egress and ingress. Yeah. Any other comments?
I do.
Yes, ma'am?
Uh, my comment is just, I know that you guys are town council, but I'm wondering if anybody did a study as to how much storage is too much storage in one county. So although you are separate and you are just analyzing the needs of the town, and although we are a county, which, um, of course we see an influx and an outflux, um, yearly because of Pax River, do we really need another storage facility? And I don't know the answer to that. I'm just challenging you to do the research, not as a town, but more so as a county. I'm saying that as a consumer of storage. I own a business where I rent storage units. Um, and I have a ton of options. I have more than two options, right in Leonardtown, left and right of Clark's Rest. So I don't necessarily think that there is a need for more. I think Mark is going to make a ton of money off of that storage, uh, storage unit facility. But I don't think in terms of it being a forty-year decision or a forty-year impact, that it's a good decision.
Rick, do you have any comments on the need?
We do have three storage units already, uh, facilities. And one to address you, uh, does not have, it does have some residential immediately adjacent to it now. There's also a hundred and fifty-litute subdivision immediately adjacent to it that's right down the road to be developed. So it, it, and it is from here to the road away from it. Does not have the separations that which we, which you have here. Uh, there is, is, there's so many things in this world in terms of leading indicators, in terms of capability and, uh, demand requirements or demand needs. The same thing for self-storage. We looked at them ourselves. We ran a test Cube Smart. Uh, and it's done on population, uh, square foot per capita. And it, it is, this immediate area is underserved, believe it or not. And particularly underserved, I understand what you're saying about small alternatives, but there's no immediate self, uh, climate control. Climate control was more and more important to people all the time when they realized the importance of having their property, whatever it might be, stored in a climate-controlled facility so you don't have mildew, mold and those type of things, which can be accumulated in papers and things of that nature at the same time. So if, if, if there wasn't a need for it, uh, the demand, we wouldn't be doing it because it wouldn't be feasible for us at the same time to financially. But I appreciate it with all honesty.
And I would just add about, um, just because we get this question all the time, and if you're not in the business, you don't understand necessarily how it works. But for instance, when Dunkin' Donuts, before Dunkin' Donuts came in, there was a Popeyes plan there. Both of them met the zoning code. The town cannot say, if it meets the zoning regulations, they can't say, oh, we like this franchise, we don't like the other franchise. So a lot of people came out against the Popeyes and they ended up not coming in, but they love the Dunkin' Donuts. So, I mean, it really is about what the, the, the public will bear. And it's really not up to the town to go out and figure that out. It's up to whoever's proposing the development. And the other thing is that the commercial Route Five is our heaviest commercial zone. It's commercial highway zoning. Downtown is a scaled-down version of commercial. We don't have, allow, um, gas stations and things like that. The heavier use is, that is our heaviest use zoning category for commercial. So just for some more information.
Uh, ma'am, would you just state your name for the record, please?
Carol Cherry.
Okay. And your address?
Hollikman.
Hollikman, okay. Yes, sorry.
How you doing? I'm Mr. Ludwig, I too have a lifelong resident of St. Mary's County, born and raised in Leonardtown. Yep, and, uh, Brian Hamlet. Uh, I was heartbroken when I saw Clark's Farm go into a development back in the day. I remember my wife would tell you the story. However, yet here I am, a resident of Clark's Rest. And I actually live on Clark's Rest Road in view of where this location's going to be. And at that time, I did a look at dilapidated pennies to answer your question about foliage. So in this case, at least I'll see something maybe a little more appealing than a penny building a bit older. I'm not, I'm not up for retail because I don't really want to see the increase in traffic in and out of that intersection area and having hard enough time pulling in and out of Clark's Rest right now. So I'm not really up for retail. I talked to Marvin about, uh, what his anticipation is for retail and, or not retail, but, uh, traffic laws in that aspect. Really not overexcited that there's a storage unit going in there, but on the same side, I recognize and I have spoken with them about the different options that they've gone to. So I just want to voice my opinion that I'm not really overly opposed to this as a resident of Clark's Rest and as a person who lives on Clark's Rest Road, whose backyard will oversee the walking trails and will see this facility in there.
Thank you. And speaking of the walking trail, you had mentioned that it's, I mean, the walking trail doesn't get close, it can't go past the buffer, so it, it's not going to be close to this facility.
Yeah, but I think I give a pretty good idea. I'll turn it a little bit, whoa. The, this plan does not specifically show all the walking trails, but I think where we're speaking of, again, for reference purposes, uh, this is the pump station. This is the self-storage and the photos I took showed all the vegetation and so forth in here. The, uh, walking trail picks up somewhere in this vicinity, correct, Mark?
Right here. It goes behind these homes.
Yeah, goes right behind these homes.
Or right here.
Yeah. So you can see the distance is significant between the storage facility and the trails themselves, not only horizontally, but vertically, between the distance between the, what you have, topography changes between it, plus all the vegetation at the same time too.
Walk through the trails up here.
Okay.
This is really just the pathway to get down to that.
Very good point. And, and as you recall, the one photo I showed, and I showed it again, like I said, when you look here, you saw nothing but trees at the same time too. So it's, it's not like the buildings here and the trail are right adjacent to it. That's not the case at all. There's a lot of separation.
So there's going to be a connection between our subdivision and, is it Hank's or something?
London's Grant.
London's Grant, I'm sorry.
Down here.
Okay. So that's not going to be?
No, that's totally at the other end of the project.
I don't think you can get from the walking trail to here without coming down and walking up the sidewalk on Route Five. I don't think physically it's possible, with the white lamps and the pots and...
I think the, I think just the, you could walk back to that mound that you guys have built up and then go down that way.
Back that way, behind the?
Yeah. There's not, there's not a straight shot.
Okay.
Yeah, I think the white lights come in the center.
Yeah, it's called, yeah.
I, I think you could come behind this big pile over here and back run that way. But it's not really part of the walking trail.
No. The vegetation increases in a relatively short period of time. Hopefully you all were able to see this.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Any other public comment?
Uh, Gordon Stellway. Um, I was just curious what the product mix is. How many ten-by-tens, how many ten-by-twenty's? Um, just the scale of the project sizing.
I don't have that in my drawings I have with, but it's, it's a variety of, of unit sizes. Five-by-fives, five-by-tens, ten-by-tens, ten-by-twenty's. There's a, there's an overall variant mix at the same time too.
Okay. Do you know about the net leasable square footage?
Uh, the net leasable square footage, uh, is in the range of sixty, sixty-some thousand square feet. That's the relevant square footage.
Right.
It, it takes away the common areas and so forth. They get deducted from that. There are always the stairwells and things of that nature.
Okay. So those are deducted out of the sixty?
No, so they're, they, that sixty-some does not include those. That's just the, that's the storage units themselves, sixty-some thousand square feet. Thank you. Sure.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay. Thank you. Comments, questions from the council?
I'll just say, you know, I appreciate everyone's comment. You know, I, I'm life, I've lived in Leonardtown, you know, born here. I mean, I appreciate it. Again, I'm not sold on it myself, but yes, it does meet our zoning. You know, for those of you that don't know me, I live right in Singletree, so I pass Clark's Rest all the time and, you know, I have to see it too. I get, you know, I don't live in Clark's Rest, but I will be looking at it as well. But, um, I do appreciate everything Rick and Marvin have done. They have been good to work with and they have made changes for us. So I do appreciate that.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I'll second what Jay said. Thanks, everyone, for the, the input. Um, I agree, it's not where the strategic plan was going or where I thought we were going with Leonardtown, but they do meet the planning and zoning requirements. So it's something that I definitely want to look into, um, the next go-around. But, um, thanks, everyone, for coming out and hearing everyone's opinion.
And Larry, I appreciate you going through our files and making sure we're, uh, double-checking us.
Honestly, done the plans, but anyway.
Thank you. Anyone care to make a motion?
All right, I move to approve the final site plan for Clark's Rest self-storage units as revised pending fire marshal approval.
I'll second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay. Two, one vote passes. Thank you very much. Appreciate everyone's input. Yeah, want to move on to, uh, your next item?
Okay, the next item is a liquor license letter of support from Old Town Pub. Um, so each year, Old Town Pub does a, um, anniversary celebration and outside in their parking lot. They do fence off the area. It's the same setup that they've had for the last several years. Um, so they just get a one-day extension of premises for their outdoor concert. Um, and, um, that we need to do a letter of support for that activity.
For the liquor board?
Yes.
We've had this in the past, there's been no issues, right? I mean?
No.
Okay.
They monitor it very well and it's, it's accorded, uh...
It's fenced in, they stay in the parking lot?
Yeah, they have people at each entrance. I think there's two entrances and they have someone stationed there to make sure no one's walking out.
All right. I move to approve a liquor license letter of support for Old Town Pub for a one-day extension of premises for their anniversary outdoor concert.
I'll second.
Okay, motion and second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed? Thank you very much.
Okay, the next item is the introduction of ordinance number one ninety-two. Subject is the sale of surplus real property. At last month's meeting, you approved the contract for the sale of our, uh, second and final condo in the Profit Building. Um, this is unit three oh-one. Um, the mayor has signed the con- the contract of sale and they're doing their, um, paperwork for their lending. And, uh, we are hoping to get to closing around, uh, the first part of July. Um, so we are introducing this, uh, ordinance today, uh, for the si- final process. We, we did public hearings back in twenty-sixteen when we, we put these, um, properties up for sale. Um, so this is just introducing that, this today, there's no action needed.
Okay.
And then, um, the only other things I had were a couple of updates. So the slips in the pier, we awarded the contract, um, all the paperwork has gotten started. The notice to proceed, uh, I will probably issue that tomorrow. So we're working with the company, Essie Davis, um, to, uh, get all the products ordered. And once I know a, a schedule for construction, I'll let you know, but things are moving forward with that. We had the, uh, deadline passed now for the facade improvement grant. And I'm very excited to say we have fifty thousand dollars to, um, to grant. And we got sixty-four thousand, three hundred and thirty-five dollars in requests. Um, fifteen different businesses, uh, filled out applications. Um, and the total cost, uh, of all the improvements to be made, uh, based on that fifty thousand dollars would be a hundred and ninety-three thousand, three hundred and fifty-one in improvement. So it really is a, a good investment. We submitted today the application for the second round of grants for next year and we hope to get another fifty thousand. Because as you can see, we don't have enough to cover this. We'll probably, um, have to cut back on each one a little bit. Um, but it was a really good turnout and I, and I'm really pleased that we are able to offer that at least for this year and hopefully next year as well. And then the last thing is today, we received notification that we got the, um, public art grant for the, um, winery sculpture that we're doing that you haven't seen. Um, it's a ten-foot, uh, sculpture, metal sculpture. It will rotate. Um, they're really excited about it and we did get the grant today. It's running through the Arts Council because it's outside, outside the Arts and Entertainment District. So it will be a pass-through grant to us from the Arts Council. And the winery is pledging, um, twenty-five hundred of the matching money and we budgeted twenty-five hundred of the matching money. And that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to my report, uh, just a couple of updates also. The hotel, I did talk to Brian Norris on that. Um, they are still trying to, um, get a restaurant to go in there. They're, they're talking to a couple of them, but, um, no one's committed yet. Kind of what their plan is possibly is to bump out the backside of the hotel on the closest, uh, side here into the parking area to put the kitchen. That way, wouldn't have to, uh, kind of redo everything in the, uh, in the hotel itself, so. They're not gonna start the renovations on the rooms until they get a commitment one way or the other. They're looking at oth- other options for retail in the two banquet rooms, uh, if they don't do the restaurant, so. That, uh, hopefully will come, come together within the next month or so. And let's see here, the, uh, you mentioned the Seymour Town, um, building and their restaurant. They should be starting their build-out here soon for that. And of course, we have the Maryland Municipal League at the end of this month over in Ocean City, looking forward to that. Um, also, I'll be, most likely become the, uh, president of the Mayor's Association at that meeting. Was kinda looked into that, but anyway, we'll see how that goes. And then, um, actually tomorrow, I have a meeting in D C at the, uh, with the, um, Intergovernmental Affairs Committee. Senator Ben Carson's gonna be, uh, speaking. Couple other, uh, they've got a community revitalization panel and then a, uh, infrastructure panel. So, uh, uh, looking forward to that tomorrow also. Uh, that's all I've got. Tyler?
All right, so what's going on around town for events? On, um, May eighteenth, the Leonardtown Summer Music Festival kicked off with the U S Navy Band. Uh, a ton of people hung out in Leonardtown Square. They had a moment where they attributed to all the military members in the audience by asking them to stand and they played. Um, the next two music festivals were, were at the Leonardtown Wharf. It was the Southern Maryland Youth Orchestra, which performed on May twenty-seventh, and then the Leonardtown High School Jazz Band on May thirtieth. Um, on June first, the Lucky Few performed in Leonardtown Square with a great turnout again. And on June second, at the Leonardtown Wharf, a concert from Lindsey Hudgens, um, which, uh, who was a highly sought-after worship leader. Uh, another great turnout. Um, the thunderstorms held off that day. Then I missed it this last weekend, but Hydro FX, uh, performed at the Crab Festival at, um, on June seventh. And then Six Guns South performed on Leonardtown, or will be performing on Leonardtown Square June twenty-second from six to nine P M. Um, July, uh, the performances are, uh, red, white and blues, first Friday on July fifth from five to eight P M. And then Latrice Carr performs on the square Saturday, July sixth from six to nine P M. Additionally, the Leonard, Leonard's Grant five K, uh, kicked off May twenty-fifth and they raised over nineteen thousand dollars for the Leonardtown Fire Department over the last seven years of holding this event. So it was a great turnout. All the residents and kids run and participate. Um, Saturday, June eighth, the Leonardtown Rotary Club presented its annual Paddle for Heroes, uh, from eight A M. to two P M. And Zumba Fitness Around Town continues at the Port of Leonardtown Winery every Saturday in June from eight-thirty to nine-thirty A M. And that's it, a lot going on.
I was able to go out to Leonard's Grant for the, uh, fun run. They had over ninety-seven kids participate in the, uh, fun run, so.
Yeah.
Great turnout. And I was, uh, down at the Paddle for Heroes at the Wharf this weekend. And before us was the yoga class. They had over a hundred people in the yoga class. I mean, I couldn't believe it, so, great turnout, so.
Tyler, do you, do you get headcounts at these events?
Um, I, Brandy tries to give a estimate.
We do counting and try to, try to estimate.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, it's ki- kinda hard to tell because people are everywhere, but we estimate for the tree lighting, eight thousand people or so on the square, day after Thanksgiving, so. Yep. That it?
Yep.
Okay. Uh, Jay, Southern Maryland Municipal Association?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. So my report's very short. I'm attending the summer conference, uh, the Maryland Municipal League that starts June twenty-third in Ocean City. Um, I'll be serving my third year on the Board of Directors there, so I'm looking forward to that. And Katie and I did do the, uh, walk run there at Leonard's Grant. We kinda did a little bit there, then we went to Clark's Rest, walked around there, then we ended up down Leonardtown Wharf. So we kinda did the whole town that day, so we had a good time, so that's all I have. Thank you.
Good, and, and I might add that all the council members are making it to the, uh, conferences.
That's right, yeah. Yep, very good.
Okay, Mary, business development and retention?
Yeah, I did have a question. Has, um, have any of the bars and restaurants had any, um, lowering? Have they noticed a bit lower volume now that the tiki bar's been open over in Solomon's?
I'm not sure, I haven't, um...
Yeah, I'm just curious.
Yeah.
I, I walk through quite a bit, you know, I walk my dog in the, at night and I walk through the downtown and I'll tell you, I mean...
I was gonna say, I don't think they have had any reduction. I mean, it seems like...
Well, it's, it's been light. I mean, I go by, there's nobody in, um, in the speakeasy, in the social speakeasy, the last couple of Fridays and Saturdays that I've been there.
I know Saturday, um, um, Front Porch had a waiting list, waiting of, of over an hour.
Okay.
So.
Yeah, just curious.
Yeah.
Um, I did get to meet with Carrie Patterson from the Carrie Patterson Art Studio. And she does a summer camp. She partners with Big Larry and the Escape Room for the summer, which I think is just great. That's a really great thing for us to do, to be bringing the children in and encouraging them to stay in Leonardtown. Um, and she had some really great thoughts about us being an Arts and Entertainment District and things that she could, she could help provide if we could give her some of the funding that we have from our grant money. And so I thought that was a really, that was a really great idea. Uh, she was apparently, and I didn't know this, this was before my time, but apparently it was her and a couple of students that did that mural on the side of the new Spice Studio building and...
It was a temporary mural. We, we actually do grant, um, for programs.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and Carrie actually has benefited from some of those sometimes, as the Arts Council does, as well as the A and E District. And now this year and last, and we, we found out at the end of the year that we got a ten thousand dollar grant from the Arts and Entertainment District and we should get that this year as well. So it really helps a lot with the funding.
Yeah, I think she's got some, some great ideas.
She does.
And she said that, you know, that temporary wall that they did, that she just, she goes, I'm embarrassed of the mural because it was just a bunch of students that came and did it. It was supposed to be temporary. And she said, it's been here for a year and everybody takes pictures. And, and then she said, you know, we should do like the wing wall. I had, had a couple of other people ask me about doing a wing wall. So they put the wings up so you can stand in front of it and get your pictures and, and the social media.
Yeah, I've actually, several people that are, are kinda working on that idea and, and Carrie is very involved.
Carrie had, uh, Yellow Door Studios.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, and now she's got a place.
I just, I mean, I really thought that was fantastic. I mean, that's what we like to see is these small businesses that are working together and having a partner with Big Larry and...
And she's one of the partners also for the children, for the drop and die, so yellow, I mean, um, Carrie Wine and Design and then the Arts, uh, Arts Council are doing, uh, programs for children during the concerts, for some of the concerts.
Yeah, I think that's, that's fantastic. I don't know how to find out about it. I told her, I said, I don't know how to find out about these things. I live here and I don't know how, about them.
Oh, well, it's certainly on the website for the concerts.
Okay.
It's of which concert, who's doing what.
Okay.
Um, and we're doing a ton of, pick Facebook and, um, you know, pushing the, uh, everything out about the concert.
Yeah, I think that's, I mean, I think that's just tremendous.
Absolutely.
Luckily, my kids are finally old enough, I can leave them home alone, which is good because when, hour and a half meeting, that's good. But, uh, you know, for the other people that do need it, I mean, it's wonderful to be able to have some place for the kids to go. So I was really, really happy to see that.
Yeah.
Okay, anybody else? If not, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Thank you. So what'd you think, Doug?